Good evening. I'd like to bring the January Public Meeting of the School of Board of School Directors of Interboro School District to order. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Caldwell.
Mr. Eckert. Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. De Batista.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Phelps.
Here.
Mrs. Kuduski.
Here.
Mr. Razzie.
Here.
Mrs. Hager.
Here.
Mrs. Kuduski, may we have the invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and granted this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the reports from our student representatives. Matt Kleaver and Abby Marolla.
Abby actually had dental surgery yesterday, so I'm going to be the only one reading the report. At the kindergarten, kindergarten academy families had a toy drive for Toys for Tots, while teachers and staff members provided gifts and gift cards for several families in need. Also, the kindergarten held their December book club, which 30 students and their parents attended. At Glen Olden, Tuesday, December 23rd, our eighth graders held their mentor breakfast, where students invited someone who inspired them in some way. Also, this year, with the generosity of Glen Olden staff and the Eaton Corporation, they were able to provide Christmas joy for over 28 families in the neighborhood. At Norwood, Norwood Home and School held its annual holiday shop, December 9th through 11th, where students were able to shop for family members. And, on December 11th, students in grades four to eight had their annual holiday concert. At Prospect, for the second consecutive year, all students and staff delivered homemade holiday cards to residents in the neighborhood, and, thanks to the generosity of Prospect staff, who contributed at charity through weekly dress-down days, raised $1,000 to purchase toys for families in need. At Tinicum, eighth grade students and parents hosted an Atwoodby's Breakfast fundraiser, as well as a Breakfast with Santa fundraiser. Also, on December 16th, Tinicum held their winter concert. The school community is anxiously looking forward to the spring concert. And, at the high school, on Wednesday, December 17th, the high school held its Red Cross Blood Drive. 112 donors were present, and 97 units were collected. Each one of those units will save three lives. And, on December 23rd, we held our annual holiday breakfast for all students, made possible with the donations from all school clubs. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Matt. Mrs. Riley.
Thank you. For January is School Board Recognition Month, which honors members of local boards for their commitment to provide quality education for Publix, for PA schoolchildren. School directors generously contribute their time and talent to advancement and success of public education. This is a year-round commitment that goes unrecognized. On behalf of the Interboro administration and community, I would like to thank each and every board member for their dedication to the students of the Interboro School District. Each member has received a certificate on behalf of PSBA and handmade cards from our gifted students, which are in your folders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. We certainly appreciate your recognition, and also the cards from our students. They're quite welcome. Mrs. Kuduski, our public comments.
Yes, Mrs. Hager. First, Charles Montith.
Charles Montith, 546 St. Avenue. I just wanted to inform the board that we've gotten the lights. The Tinicum Township approved it last night, so I put in countless hours of trying to figure this out on my own. So, you're welcome. We've got that done. I also want to talk to you about school safety. Last year, my daughter was almost hit by a bus, by a car going through a school zone last year. That's why I pushed for these lights so hard. Today, I find out my five-year-old, who the school continually informs me is slower, has seemed to outsmart your security system and get outside within your protected walls of the kindergarten academy. This is unacceptable. I will not let this happen again. If this happens again, I will go to any authority deemed necessary to make sure that action is taken immediately, to make sure this doesn't happen again. This is the second time that your policies have failed me and my children, and it will not happen a third. Thank you.
Jennifer Cornish-Dutch, 143 Powhatan Avenue, Tinicum. I wanted to make sure that I came to the board to speak about correspondence that I sent regarding a situation that involved my child and another adult student. My child happens to be a minor. I reported that my son was involved in some back-and-forth high school banter between the soccer team and the football team for a continued amount of time.
Pardon me, Mrs. Dutch. We don't discuss these issues with our students in public. There are issues of confidentiality that are involved. If you'd like to stay to the issue that you have, rather than-
Details?
Yes.
Precisely. So, the incident that happened, I brought to the attention of the principal and superintendent, and I was told repeatedly that due to the lack of, or I'm sorry, due to the inconvenience of the timing, this incident happened on the 20th, which is a Sunday of December, right before school break. I reported this on a Sunday, and on Monday and Tuesday, my child attended school not knowing whether or not the threats that were made against him were actually going to happen or not. I wanted to make sure, even though I won't discuss the details of the person that did this, I will state the relevance of the natures, the nature of the threats. My son was threatened with sexual violence on Twitter because of a school event that happened. He was, that sexual violence reference was to occur at school, and it was directly made towards my child, from the student. After that threat, immediately, he was also then threatened with gun violence. He was threatened with being shot with a gun. After I reported these incidents, and it was taken care of, or investigated, an hour after this child was spoken to, another tweet went out. This tweet, in my opinion, was an escalated tweet. It went from a direct threat to my child, to a direct violent threat to Interboro's high school students, staff, and teachers. And that threat was to shoot at the school lunch line. This tweet was done during school hours, and I felt that it was very necessary to bring attention to it immediately.
Mrs. Dutch, the administration, certainly the school board, is aware of this situation. How you're presenting this is from your perspective.
Absolutely, it is.
I understand that you met with the superintendent, that you met with the principal, that you met with the authorities, the police. I certainly feel confident that the administration handled this and was receptive and responsive to your issues.
I would disagree with that.
Well, I understand your position.
I would like to finish making my statements. I will not name any names. So, the reason why I'm speaking tonight is because I feel that it was not handled appropriately. And the reason why I think that is because during the entire time between December 20th, the date of the event, and back to school, January, was it second or third? January 2nd or 3rd, my child, who was threatened, was only spoken to once, and that was the morning of his return to school on 21st, the morning after this happened. He was addressed by the athletic director to say, "It's going to be okay. Everything will be all right. We're going to look into it, go to class."
Are you saying that you did not meet with the superintendent before your son came back into school?
I'm saying that, no, I did not say that. If you would let me finish my thought, I will let you know what my exact point is. And my exact point is that my child did not get addressed or talked to again after that initial few minutes in the morning. He went through all of Monday and Tuesday, not knowing whether or not he needed to protect himself, not knowing if he was going to be shot in the hallways, or sexually raped by an adult student in a bathroom. So my concern is that through this timeframe of December 20th to back to school, the person who I feel was a victim in the situation, his life was threatened, he was sexually threatened, one conversation for a few minutes. My child did not feel safe. My child was nervous in the hallways and had no idea what was going on. So, the confidential practices of how these things are investigated, the policy as it reads, the things that are listed here as what happens at this level of a threat were not carried out. It states specifically in the student handbook, "Warning: Detention/Suspension contingent upon the seriousness of the threat." I would say, in my opinion, as a parent, this is very serious.
We cannot discuss that.
I know. I've gotten that comment often. I'm making my point, ma'am. Also, at this level of threat, police notification at the direction of the prince, or discretion of the principal. I, myself, as a concerned, involved parent, reported this immediately, the same hour that I reported it to the school principal and superintendent, and they did respond immediately. They let me know that they would look into this, and I trusted in that. I no longer trust in that through this whole incident. And then, parent notification, and I know, as a parent, I witnessed that this adult student's parents were not notified.
No, that's off limits.
It's not off limits. It is my perception of the situation. They were not notified until the 21st, at 3:30, after that third tweet went off.
I think that we have the gist of what your complaint is.
So, the point is-
No, the point is that this is much too detailed for confidentiality of other students.
I apologize for being detailed.
Of other students. That is disciplinary action that concern other students in our district, and we will not discuss it.
So my concern that I would like to bring in front of the board is that a very serious series of events happened. I don't feel protocol was followed, policy was followed. I don't feel that the students of Interboro High School, nor the teachers, were protected, and I feel that this is a very large concern. And, I don't also feel that if you're going to look to spend millions for school safety, moving doorways and putting in safety windows to verify identification for active shooters and trying to slow them down to get access to a school, I think you also may need to consider the violent threat within the walls of our schools and address them accordingly when they happen. I, as a concerned parent, brought these to your attention, and I feel that they were not addressed or taken care of at all.
Well, I certainly disagree with you. And I have a statement to read, because this has been, certainly we've talked about this, that the board is aware that the administration has experienced an increasing number of incidents involving student misuse of social media and/or the internet while outside of school. We cannot publicly discuss any student or share the details of any particular incident or investigation in the interest of security and confidentiality. Please be advised that the school district has a number of policies in place, and others in the process of being approved, that regulate student use and misuse of social media and/or the net internet while at school or at a school-related activity, and impose disciplinary measures. However, due to the omnipresence of such devices in our everyday lives, oftentimes, the misconduct occurs while students are not in school.
That is not this case.
Therefore, we ask that parents and guardians be alert to their children's use of social media at all times. Board has several policies in place that set forth the rules and expected student conduct with regard to the use of these devices. The policies are on our district website. We are also in the process of revising. They, these policies provide that threats, harassment, bullying, and similar misconduct by electronic means is not tolerated by the school district-
It has been tolerated.
-and violators will be disciplined. Discipline can include penalties such as detention and suspension, and include confiscation of the device or denial of access. We follow these policies when matters governed by them arise and are within the authority of the district to address. There are instances where the district policies may not be applied, such as when the incidents arise outside of school or a school-related activity. Please be aware of your child's use of social media and internet.
I am.
We encourage you to talk to your son or daughter about the potential dangers presented by the impersonal and anonymous nature of social media and the internet, such an abuse as, such as abuse by predators and bullies. If your child is using social media sites, it's advisable to review his or her profile to ensure that no personal or inappropriate information or pictures have been posted. We encourage you to establish rules and guidelines to ensure the safety of your child while on the internet.
This parent making the statement has done those things.
And to prohibit harassing and abusive use. The school district will continue to provide internet security and education within our schools. It is important that parents also monitor internet and social media use when children are not at school.
And we are.
If you're, if you see threatening, harassing, or abusive use that is not occurring while at school or at a school activity, it is appropriate to contact your local police department. Students and parents should be aware that misuse could constitute a criminal offense, which students could be arrested, charged, and prosecuted. If instances of misuse that do not involve the district are brought to the district, the district will refer the matter to local authorities. Parents and guardians will be receiving a letter from the district that addresses these issues in the next few days.
You seem very prepared to respond to my public comments.
I am prepared to respond.
And the reason why I think that is, is because you understand that these tweets were done during school events, these tweets were done at school, during school hours.
And, and they were certainly addressed by all appropriate authorities. So, I understand your concern. We are aware of it. This board has, we have hired a security consultant. We've updated our policies, we've updated our practices. We're very much aware of this, and it's of utmost importance to us of the safety of our students. Everybody in this room, and that listens to this, is well aware of the problems with social media. The anonymity that the kids have, their, their culture, and how they speak to each other is certainly different than how adults speak to each other. So, we've got lots of issues. It is a developing area of law in school law, so we are trying very hard to stay ahead of this and to be on top of it. And anytime that our students, it is deemed that is a threat in our schools, we are on top of it.
I would disagree with those comments. I also want to state that I sent correspondence on, I believe, the 29th of December, and although I did get some feedback from some of the board members saying, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention," I did not receive not one email from the board responding formally that they even received my email.
I apologize for that. That is my fault.
I also want to bring it to the board's attention that I've reported this incident, including all email correspondence between me, the police, as well as the Interboro Board, or lack of email, including visuals of the tweets to the PA Safe Schools website. I have also made the district attorney aware of the situation, and if I need to go to news media, I will do so as well, because I don't feel that my concerns are being listened to, nor was the situation addressed. My minor child attended school and was not safe. I also want to say that the policy I see is here, but nothing, I felt, was done, including addressing my child's needs when his life is sexually threatened, or his life is violently threatened with guns.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dutch.
Does that mean that I'm no longer allowed to speak?
I think that you've made your point. I've addressed it, and this is just a reiteration of the same point.
No, I think I make addition, I made additional points, but thank you for your time.
Mrs. Kuduski, can we move to motion 5-1, please?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors, held on December 17, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from school board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Serini, may we have the solicitor's report?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. This month, my office has been working on development and review of board policy, including employee misconduct and Pass the Trash on various student issues, and also on matters involving social media.
And Pass the Trash is, could you give us a summary?
You wouldn't give a summary of that?
That is the legislation that involves employee misconduct and the need for school districts and other entities to report incidents that involve employees with sexual misconduct involving any personnel involving schools, working in schools. It's new legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Serini. Can we move to motion 7.1, please?
Motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending December 31, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from school board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $5,729,086.43 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from school board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. 7.3, please.
Motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 9.1, please, Mrs. Kuduski.
Is that a motion?
Hmm, sorry.
That's just information.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay. Onto committee reports. Following people have been appointed chairs for the standing committees at Finance, GBO meeting on January 12, 2015. I'll be the chair of Finance. Mr. Eckert is the chair of GBO. We set the meeting dates for the Finance, GBO meeting. It'll be on our website. We've tried to keep them to the first Monday of each month. There'll be no meeting in July. And also, let's go to committee reports for Finance. I will give the Finance report. At the Finance Committee, we, we have on the agenda, motion 13.1, and that is to keep within the index that is set by the state, which means that we will not be raising taxes 2.6. A school district can ask for exceptions to go beyond their index ceiling. We will not be doing that. So this is the first step that we're required to by the state, and it is on the agenda this evening. We also had a preliminary look at our budget for 2016, 2015, 16. There's certainly a lot of work to be done, but we have begun the work already. We, in the past two months, have authorized debt refinancing. That was completed, I believe, at the beginning of January. We realized savings with that. We refinance our debt and save on interest costs. So, we've been very careful to keep an eye on that in this financial climate, so that we can grab whatever savings are available. We also, Mrs. Kuduski, will be giving a report on the audit in a moment, and also, we have the financial statements that are a monthly review that are available to all board members. They give us a month-to-month update on our expenses and our revenues. And that concludes my report. And since Mr. Eckert couldn't be here due to work obligations, Mr. Evans will be giving the report for the GBO. Mr. Evans?
Yes. For the GBO meeting, we had several things took place. One was a presentation, a follow-up presentation from Mr. Wilhoff and Superintendent Riley about the plans to develop traffic and recreation and parking improvements around the Prospect Park School and the kindergarten academy by Bonnet and Associates. So we'll be voting tonight, 12.2, motion 12.2, to approve them to go ahead with the design development phase of that. And that's to improve traffic patterns around the Prospect Park School, as well as the entrance to the kindergarten academy. We believe it'll make it safer for people traveling down 10th Street, as well as for the children that are disembarking to enter the school. We also talked about contributing and participating in the fence restoration at Whitmer Field, as our schools do utilize Whitmer Field for baseball and other sports. We agreed with Prospect Park to contribute towards that fence restoration. We'll also have a first reading of the policies. Motion number 19. Just bear with me a second. I want to make sure I'm accurate on the motions. Motion number 19, it's to approve the policies regarding purchases subject to bid quotation, and that, there's some verbiage change for this year. Not much changed in that policy, except for the threshold amount that requires competitive bidding, but it's all about us being fiduciarily responsible with your money and making sure that we are getting the best price, best available price for goods and services to the school district. Also, motion 18, which was to approve a resolution urging the General Assembly to establish a new funding formula for basic education. And what that says is we're, we're standing together to essentially approach this, the state for, you know, education reform and better funding throughout the state. And that just formalizes our resolve. Also, as Mrs. Hager said, we reviewed all the committee meeting dates, as noted on page two, and changes to the school calendar as well. And the only other thing we have is a motion 12 dot one, which is a change order for Prospect Park School HVAC project, and that is essentially Phase Two of the air handling and air conditioning and heating upgrades to district buildings pending. We will approve that motion, but it's pending finances. All right, and that's it. And I might as well, I'm going to jump. There was no Delaware County Community College meeting, so I have no updates from the community college.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Kuduski.
Yes, Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Hager, and I met with the representative from Majors &amp; Mastro, the firm who conducts our annual audit of our financial statements. For a summary of, we do have three findings this year. I'll give you a summary and the remedy that goes along with each of the findings. We are going to vote this evening to approve the final report, is motion 13.2. The first finding from the company was having to do with gift cards that had been used for installing programs for the iPads that are in use in the district. And what the, seems what the problem was, it was that there was no procedure for tracking usage of the cards. Our remedy is to just discontinue using the gift cards, and we've actually set up a direct account with Apple, so that as the apps and the programs are needed, they will be directly billed to the district. The second finding had to do with the real estate taxes collected by the business office. The firm feels that we need more monthly reconciliation for the tax collection to make it easier for the annual reconciliation. So, the remedy for that, of course, will be to conduct the monthly reconciliation for the collection of the real estate taxes. The third finding had to do with the food service operations revenue. Couldn't be reconciled within the reports that the firm looked at. We have since moved on from that food service company, and we now have a new food service company. That is part of the remedy for this finding. Also, what will take place is the district bookkeeper will reconcile the food service revenues on a monthly basis, so that there, if there are any discrepancies, they can be addressed immediately. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Kuduski. The auditor's report, every other part of the audit was clean, as you- The auditor's report, every other part of the audit was clean, as usual. There are certain, you know, praising that they did for the Interboro School Board for the vigilance that we exercise in terms of finances in this district. It's very important to us that we present a fair budget that makes sure that our students receive the education that they need and deserve. Mrs. Floyd, the legislative update.
Yes, we met last Wednesday at the IU, 7:30 in the morning. And the main topics were naturally the Governor, Governor Wolf, being inaugurated, and the Senate and House Committee Chairs were named. The state budget will be presented on March 3. And then some recent news is the school's financial data public site, which, that'll be a website that provides fiscal data of public schools, including traditional school districts, charter and cyber charter schools, and comprehensive career and technology centers. The report includes information on schools' total expenditures and revenues, including per pupil expenditures and expenditures for various budget categories. Personnel salary data, average, and individuals, charter school tuition rates, fund balance, and annual financial report. And there's a way to get on this site. Then there's also, later in, on the agenda, there's a motion for me to go to the Washington for the Federal Relations Network, the Advocacy Institute being held in Washington. And I find, I have been to this before, and I find this to be very informative. It's sponsored by the National School Board Association, and it is board members throughout the United States that attend this. And it's a way of interreacting with other board members in other states and issues and problems that they have and how they're addressed. And it's a very informative meeting. Plus, we also get to, there's a meeting set up to talk to Senator Casey and see what his views are and if he's aware of some of the problems that are here in Pennsylvania. And we're also going to be meeting with Representative Pat Mann. So it's going to be very interesting. And next month, I'll report. It's going to be held February 1st to the 3rd. So I'll be giving a report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Harris, the IU.
Yes, thank you. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on January 7. It was approved for the continuation of the My Learning Plan subscription. It was also approved to contract with Upper Darby School District for the DCUI to provide ELL consultation and assessment services. It was also approved to contract with the Radnor School District with the DCUI to approve a .5 FTE special education teacher for consultation and support. And also, it was accepted the June 30, 2014 audit. For more information, go to www... There was too many W's, wasn't it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Can we proceed to motion 10, Mrs. Krajewski?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two, ending on page four.
Point of order.
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you, Madam President. Both Madam Presidents. I would like to make a motion to table personnel action item number 10.9 for employee E only.
Second.
The motion has been moved to accept or to vote on motion 10 with the exception then of 10.9. Employee E. Mrs. Serini, is that, do we have to vote on the table first? Okay. So, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion to table item 10.9 for employee E, and we have a second, and we need a vote on that one.
Okay. All those in favor, any questions or comments?
And this, just to be clear, this is the vote to table, just that one specific item.
Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That now is removed from the motion, and then we can go back and redo it?
Motion that the following personnel actions minus 10.9 employee E be approved as listed on page two through four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion 11, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 12, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Facilities be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Evans?
Comment? Yeah, on 12.2, I know we spoke the other night at work session about having a ceiling for the design costs should the work not be progressed. And, you know, effectively, you do put a ceiling on at 4.5% by fixing the construction cost not to exceed $1.6 million. But if the work is never progressed, then you don't know what the actual costs are. So just as a point of clarification, the 4.5% for the design and development work, if the work has not progressed, how do we arrive at that figure? That was my only concern. And I'm sure that can be clarified later.
Are you objecting to the motion?
No, I'm not objecting. I'm just, maybe at our next committee meeting, we could, maybe Mr. Wilhoff could clarify that for me.
Mr. Razzie? Does he want to say anything?
Yes, Mrs. Hager. I know there was a lot of emails going on, back and forth this week, but I believe there was a board communication that said that the fees were going to be fixed at the cost of the job, and we would retain the plans. So I agree with Mr. Evans that we can certainly discuss it further, but the cost of the job, if it wasn't proceeded, was, the fees for the plans were going to be based on that 4.5 of the 1.6 if we didn't proceed. And I believe Mr. Eckert, who chairs the committee, okayed that.
Yes, he did.
So just wanted to remind everybody of the email. I know there's a lot going on this week.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So everybody's okay with 12.2 as it's printed. And we can go back to that and revisit that and make it more explicit next month if we choose to. All right, so we're back to, was it moved? We have to vote. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Finance be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 14, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interboro School District and the Interboro Education Association for the time period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to make a statement. This is good news for us, our district. The Interboro School District and the Interboro Education Association are pleased to announce their agreement on a new three-year contract. The new collective bargaining agreement between Interboro and their teachers is in effect until June 30, 2017. Interboro teachers will receive a pay raise in the three years of the contract. The teachers have agreed to significant changes in their medical and prescription benefit plan to help ensure the financial stability of the Interboro School District. Both parties are mutually agreed on language that will allow the Interboro School District to meet the demands placed on it by the Pennsylvania Student Testing Program. Both the Interboro Board of School Directors and the Interboro Education Association would like to acknowledge the hard work of all the negotiators from both parties. Through their efforts, the contract terms that were agreed upon are fair to the taxpayers of Glen Olden, Norwood, Prospect, and Tinnicum, while still valuing our teachers for their professional and impactful work they do with our students in our community. So we thank all those involved in, it's been months in the making, and the board is, feels confident that this is a fair agreement that addresses everybody's needs as best as possible. Any other comments from board members?
Mrs...
Mr. Razzie.
President Hager, thank you. I just wanted to thank the board, especially this time, I believe, the board was more engaged as a whole than we've been over previous contracts. I want to thank the board for sticking with me on those long executive sessions and with our HR Director Dave Crisculo and Mrs. Riley, who both did a great job supporting the board. I think we've came out with a very fair agreement for both sides and one that will certainly benefit the financial interest of the district for the next three years, and it was important work. So I'm glad every member of this board was as involved as they were in every executive session that we had. So I just want to thank the members of the board, the administration, and thank the members of the IEA for their concessions and their hard work in forming this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Razzie. So we need a roll call vote for approval of the contract. So, Mrs. Caldwell, may, I have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Good work, thank you. Motion 15, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the Interboro School District and the Interboro Transportation Association related to IEP bus monitors.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments by board members on motion 15? Hearing none. We also need a roll call vote. Mrs. Caldwell?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion 16, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached preliminary Interboro School Year Calendar for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We've looked at this calendar several times. It's gone through revisions. So we hope that this is the final and are prepared to, you know, change if we need to. So it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 17, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve Mrs. Phyllis Floyd to attend the National School Boards Association Advocacy Institute in Washington, D.C., to be held on February 1st to 3rd, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $1,800.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 18, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors for Interboro School District approve the attached resolution urging the General Assembly to establish a new funding formula for basic education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 19, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the following revisions of policies in the categories of finance and operations as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 20, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies in the categories of employees, finance, and operations as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You'll note that this is policies, new policies in place for educated misconduct, secondary market disclosure policy, which is another government regulation, and acceptable use of Internet, electronic mail, and network resources for our employees and students. Any other questions or comments about motion 20? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Anybody with old business? New business? We'll begin with Mrs. Riley.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. On the back table this evening was an informational flyer for a technology integration and mobile learning resource called Atomic Learning. This is free access for all parents and students. That provides over 50,000 step-by-step tutorials on software, emerging technology topics, and Internet safety, just to name a few. There is a direct link to this and all of our technology resources under quick links on the main page of our website. Also, through the technology resources link is information on Comcast's Internet Essentials, which is affordable Internet service for households with children who receive free reduced lunch through the National School Lunch Program. This coming Sunday, Interboro and Springfield School District are hosting the PMEA District 12 Choral Festival at Immaculata University under the direction of Ms. Hannah Canaus, our high school choral director, and Ms. Marcia Bowe, Springfield High School Choral Director. There are close to 160 students representing 38 school districts across Delaware, Chester, and Philadelphia counties. Four of those students are representing Interboro. For more information, please go to the PMEA website at www.pmea12.org. Finally, I would just like to thank Ms. Sunny Lee Mallory for the artwork that is displayed this evening. She is our traveling art teacher, and she goes between Prospect Park, Norwood, and the Glen Olden Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Mr. Harris?
Yes, I have just two quick items. I'd like to thank the district students for their kind school board appreciation letters that we all received. Some of them, really nice artwork and everything. It was very nice. I also would like to enter into the minutes my completed background check. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Any other comments from school board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I'd like to thank my colleagues on the board here for supporting me going to Washington. As I stated earlier in my report, it is a very informational and a well-worth trip. The other thing is, is the resolution that we approved, that is to go to all of our legislators as well as our representative at the IU, Larry O'Shea, Dr. O'Shea and Larry Feinberg, so that they see that our school district is, you know, working with all the other school districts across the state in regards to putting pressure on the, changing the funding formula. And the other, the other thing is, I forgot to mention in my report that Senate Bill 1 is being presented as a, you know, a primary bill for all legislators to get into the process of the PISERS reform and what's going to happen as far as how it's affecting all the school district budgets. It's just getting out of hand, and they have to come up with some kind of resolution as to how we're going to be able to handle it. And one last thing, I would like to thank Mrs. Dutch for coming and, you know, expressing herself. Each and every parent and community member has that right to come, whether anybody on this board agrees with you or not. You have that right as an advocate for your child. And I thank you for enlightening us on some of the things that you feel weren't right. And I just hope that you get some kind of resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments from the school directors?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Just a few quick comments. I want to thank the community, the students, the parents, teachers, board members... I want to thank the community, the students, the parents, teachers, board members, negotiators for their perseverance and patience through the negotiating period and resolution of the contract. I also want to thank the children who sent me cards as well. That would be Leeny Droxler, Frankie Bosch, and Leila Riley. It's very nice to hear from them, and I hope that they stay involved in politics and look forward to seeing them on the board someday. Pay attention to government, that's important. And lastly, as Mrs., I'd echo what Mrs. Floyd said, safe schools. Unfortunately, you cannot, you cannot wait for an incident to take action. The Safe Schools program is growing throughout the country, and there's other nations that could give you a prime example of what not to wait for. It is a, it's a, has to be a multi-pronged approach. But the very most important thing is take immediate action and get the proper authorities to assess a threat situation to try and determine how real the threat can be and is it actionable? Is there, is there will method and the ability to take action? So those things are critically important, and they're important to all our students with the things that are happening in the country as quick as they do happen. You mentioned active shooter. Well, that is the scariest thing in the world. But it doesn't take any planning. It doesn't take any figuring out. It's the easiest thing to do. And I don't like to talk about schools as a soft target, but unfortunately, they are. So we have to look at all those things. And it's not just locking the doors. It's not just keeping outsiders out. It's making sure that within, everybody's doing the right, safe thing. So thank you.
Any other board members? On Monday, February 2nd, 2015, a Finance Committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building. The next session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, February 16th, 2015, at 6:30 PM. The next regular monthly meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the Interboro High School on Wednesday, February 18th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Have a good meeting, a good evening. Meetings adjourned.